Planning and zoning meeting.
Turn all the mics.
Yes, gotta turn our microphones on, just for everyone. Make sure you turn off your cell phones and as far as speaking, be careful with private conversations. These mics are very sensitive and they pick up anything and everything, tapping on the table of private conversations. Yep, here's John. Call is George Lawson is absent excused. In his absence, I'll seek Rista Malanca in his absence.
Ten pounds paperwork with me.
We have John Cooney to my right.
Adam.
Bradley Rowley to his right and Charlene LaVoy. Will Platt to my left, Rista Malanca and Scott Eisenler. For agenda, public comment that's not related to anything that's on our agenda. If anyone would like to speak or anything that's not on our present agenda for tonight. Once, twice, okay. Public hearing, agenda review, do you have anything?
Just the discussion of the May meeting. You guys might have seen a bunch of emails go out, some confusion with the upcoming dates. We've got the town budget meeting on the 12th, which is our next regularly scheduled meeting. It makes sense to not have our meeting because of that. Our next regularly scheduled meeting would have been 5/26, but there is no meeting already because of Memorial Day. So I'm proposing that we hold a special meeting in between on 5/19. If that works for enough of us.
Is that a city council meeting?
Yes, there is.
Slackman will be meeting here, but we can have a meeting in the blue room if need be.
Correct.
We can vote on that if we want, under other business, Jewish?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
I didn't have anything else under.
Jeremy? No? Public hearings, public hearing, PCC 25-4, earth excavation permit renewal. App Camp Piero Alto, Butcherio, one at location 182 Torrington Road, property ID 039158019B. Proposal renewal of earth excavation permit originally issued for 11, 1979 for up to 500,000 cubic yard removal. Pierre.
That's me. Come on up.
See you again. Evening.
Any questions or answers?
We've got your maps, we've got all the information you've given us. I don't know if commission members have any questions? The applicant? Pretty straightforward, the application has been in ongoing process for several years.
I just have a formality question.
Yep.
Does the applicant need to submit another application for their excavation? Or do we just?
In the past, we had renewed it every two years and there was some question in our regulations whether it could be renewed every two years or couldn't be.
The way the regulation reads is that they're good for two years, but the commission can renew the permit application. The question was whether or not it needed to be a public hearing. So I think I spoke to you at your last meeting and asked how you wanted to.
So we did finish that public hearing, but you know, as a formality, once we've had a public hearing, it was a special kind of bill.
Yes, correct, yep.
There's nothing that stops us.
Nothing special, no, you can simply renew. And you could do that, I mean, if you see fit, you could do that tonight.
Anyone else with a question?
Are there conditions or anything that's changed since you've been working?
No, nothing's changed. I very rarely work there, to be very honest. I probably spend maybe $200 a year there. It's more of a hobby than it is a business. I happen to have business time. Well, it's my recreation, you know?
Public, have any comments on the application? Reading publicly, that's a period for you. Yes, Troy?
Troy LaMaire, 51 Morgan Drive, Slackman and Planning and Zoning Liaison. I'd like to speak in favor of this application. As you know, the town of Winston is really pushing for economic development. Quarries like Pierre's are desperately heated for to keep costs down for our developers. If they have to travel out of town and get materials elsewhere, it's going to be costly and they look towards that area to build. So quarries are shut down as we speak. We don't really want that to happen, we want to keep that going. Pierre, like he said, doesn't really do a whole lot there, but you know, anything that he could do to help our economic development would be great.
No, it's not, it's like a continuous operation full time, it's just a part-time operation.
I'm gonna make your mic sales.
He'll be out of business if we're. Anyone else who wants to speak? Going once, going twice?
Okay, go ahead.
One more, one more.
So I do have a copy, I believe it's the application here or no? Looks like it.
Yeah.
It's not what I'm used to seeing for earth excavation. I thought usually it has the hours at which the materials will be removed during the day. And it looks like a different form than what I've seen in the past. I'm not against it.
Could be because of the switch open perhaps. This is a permit that I think has been in effect since 1979, somewhere around there.
I just remember seeing the hours, you know, material being removed, how many like tractor truck loads. I was just wondering if it's formalized or not with that, if that's acceptable, all right? But I remember seeing tracking mats for mitigation of, 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 there's nothing in there on this application.
Could we do a condition of approval that all existing conditions and the segment is followed, continues to be followed?
I don't see why not. It hasn't been going in the past because I know I've been on the commission and we've approved it twice while I've been on the commission at least, if not three times.
Adam's point's a good one because it's like, is this going to be the one used for everybody? Or is this just because this is such a longstanding operation? So we should just straighten that out at some point.
I think that's something they've got to state now with the online program. They have the online system.
Everybody's new and they don't know what the hell they're doing. Play bluntly, I mean, they sent me, they sent me a notice I had to come to a meeting. Meeting was two weeks prior to when they sent me the notice. They're really kind of messed up out there.
Now where?
Representative charges sending this paperwork out, you know, they.
That's you guys.
All messed up.
He's talking about you.
They called me, they called me yesterday, says you didn't, you didn't do this and you didn't, or you didn't send out the adjacent landowners, you know, the notice. Called me on Wednesday, had to be out by Friday, we got it done. And they, they called me this morning, she called me, she says, you didn't do it. I said, well, I thought that was all taken care of last week. We emailed it to them, they went through their emails and found that, you know, it's just a lot of confusion going on.
New people.
A little shiny. A lot of confusion. They sent me a letter, said I had to be at the meeting two weeks ago. And I get, you know, I get the letter two weeks later.
Thank you for pointing that out, we'll try to work.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, you know, it's kind of, it's a little bit messed up.
Well, I think if it was a new application, right, we would require a lot more information.
Yes, definitely.
The application would be much different than what this application is. Since this is a renewal, we have a lot of information already in the file, assuming we're going to carry the permit with these existing conditions, maybe just the application would need to be as complicated.
Yeah, and if it was a new application for a new earth excavation permit, it might even require a site visit by some of the commission members too. Definitely, because we would need to look at the site. I mean, we're, I'm familiar with the site we're talking about here.
And it was never a special permit before, was it?
No.
Okay, so we just.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Where you had to send out notices to the butters and we have a public hearing for you.
No, this is the first time we've done the public hearing deal. It's always just a renewal, a meeting and a renewal.
It was just a meeting.
Not have to send the adjacent landowners notice and have a public hearing. This is the first time, 24 years or five years, I don't know, that this occurred.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Somebody make the motion to close the public hearing? Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Closed. Public hearing closed. Thank you. Resta, John, second, yeah.
Thank you for your time, everybody.
Okay, yeah, we'll be discussing it a little bit later here.
Just by the way of view, we'll make the decision.
Item B, PCC 25-5, special permit, Justin O'Neal, 150 Ashley Road, construct three bedroom, two bath, 1,489 square foot modular ranch home. That's been tabled to May 12th, which if we have our meeting, May 19th, it'll be May 19th. The only thing we have to make sure is that the applicant has notification of his joining the property owners of the hearing. Okay. That was my, my only concern there. Under old business, PCC 25-4, earth excavation permit renewal, applicant Pierre Alto, Butcherio. Location 182 Torrington Road, property ID 039158019B. Proposal renewal of earth excavation permit, originally issued for 11, 1979 for up to 500,000 cubic yards. Someone like to make a motion?
Make a motion to, draft motion for planning zoning commission dated April 28th, 2025. Approved application number 25-4, excavation renewal, application owner Pierre Tiallo?
You can call me Pierre.
Just Pierre.
Sorry, location 182 Torrington Road, proposal earth excavation renewal. Map 039 block 158 lots 019B, based on testimony and subject to the following conditions. In evaluating this application, planning zoning commission is relied upon information provided by the applicant. And if such information subsequently proves to be false, deceptive, incomplete, and or inaccurate, this permit shall be modified, suspended, or revoked. Approval is granted based on submitted plans drafted by Robert Green Associates entitled Topographic Survey Land owned by Peter. 182 Torrington Road, Connecticut Route 800 Winchester, Connecticut. Scale 1 equals 30 dated 5/30/2014. Revised 1110/2015. Again, revised 1130/2018, revised 114/2021. Revised 13/2023 and revised 313/2025.
My second. I think we should just add that all existing approval conditions previously approved by the planning and zoning are still in force or shall still be enforced. Any other conditions, anybody else? Everybody, approval? Against? Okay.
No, I'm sorry. I was forward. Dragging my feet.
Okay, unanimous. Where else have you? You're good.
You seconded?
Good, go. Now I'll give it to you the second and then send it back down. You forgot her, huh?
That's okay.
John's got to sign it again.
Yeah. We're signing this under new business, PCC 25-7. It's an updated official zoning map, App Camp Town of Winchester, locations various. Proposal update of the official zoning map and that, we have a public hearing set for that for June 9th.
Correct, we went over last month, I think in detail, any questions about that?
I don't think so, we've got the new color scheme, which is industry standard now, instead of being totally different. Very good.
Were you going to send out electronic copies prior to?
Should have gone out previously, but we can send them out again. Okay, yeah, we'll send them out. They're also on Open God, we created an application, so there, if you click on the link that's on your agenda, that'll bring you to it as well.
Good with that. Under other business, discussion, updated zoning map. First item we had is 39 South Main Street. That was something that Jeremy had brought forward.
Yeah, I'll talk about that.
So 39 South Main Street was brought to our attention by the property owner.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask.
Yeah, different from the next one. He's looking to market the property and wondering if zoning it, changing the zoning to town gateway might make it more marketable. There's some complications with that site anyway, it's sort of landlocked.
A lot of complications with that site.
Yeah, yeah.
What is it then?
Right now it's nothing, so at 39, well, Jeremy's gonna bring it up.
There's two parcels there, which are owned by the same person, but it's a large house on one parcel.
And the only access is by a strong terrace right now. There are other possible access points, but the state of Connecticut owns some of the property that would be necessary that they took as part of the right of way for the Route 8 build and some other things. But we, I've reached out to contacts of the Department of Transportation and got some mapping that we're starting to look at. So very early stages, but the owner did want us to just start the discussion with P and Z to see if you guys are amenable to that kind of change. Now, I explained to him it's kind of difficult when you don't have an end use in mind, this is all hypothetical.
Looking for what type of use, I mean, I went all the way around the property this last weekend and, you know, the access is absolutely difficult if not.
Right.
Non-existent. Kittredge Lane was your borders, you've got a 20-foot drop off.
You do.
There, and Route 800?
Yep.
Same thing.
There's another possible access point on formerly Palmer Avenue, if I have it right, which is now pretty much Colony Drive.
Yes.
And there's, there's a little stub, if you look on GIS where there would have been a road at one point. As a matter of fact, I bounced that off at DPW and Jim Rollins, Rollins said that he believes there's still a water line there that's been capped that could be reinstituted if a development took place in, in the site.
How big is that, that parcel?
Two pieces are almost four acres.
Yeah, it's just under four.
And when I ask, what is 39 South Main, what district is it in now? What's?
RR. Or no, Townsend family.
So there are many uses for it in the town single family, based on our regulations.
Yeah. Yeah.
So you can just see what it looks like currently. So it's this parcel here. Can you all see that?
It's actually the, it's the light that reflects on there.
Let me count them, we got three.
Yeah, it's three now, yep.
And I don't know which kind of all.
That's right.
Well, that one's doing something now, Jeremy.
This remote controls both TVs.
It appears, yeah.
Yeah, we got, we got all this neat technology, let's crank it up. Yeah, it's right, it's right there at the, the same wall?
Well, there's, there's a couple of other mapping errors here. According to GIS, the same person owns this parcel, which they do not. There's also two different parcels on Colony Drive, address to Colony Drive. This one, which is correct, and this one, which is incorrect. This could be part of the possible access in there without the great changes like Kitteridge that you were mentioning. So again, early stages of just trying to develop what could be done there.
But that, that would be then still surrounded by, the blue is town single, town single family? So it would just be an island within the blue?
They're looking for us to do spot zoning.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, gate, there's, am I doing that?
I figured, no, I figured it's a little.
Gateway right on this side as well, so it's not.
But that's Main Street, you know, that's Route 44. I know, but that's, that's the point, that's Route 44.
Those properties you have access to from Main Street, that property you do not.
Right.
DOT is never going to give them access.
Oh, I highly doubt it.
There's a stone wall there.
They will not from Route 8, it's a limited access highway, they will not from 44, you've got a 20-foot wall.
So the house, do you access it through Kittredge Lane, is that where you access it?
No, the house that's there is accessed through Strong Terrace.
Strong Terrace.
But Strong Terrace and, and.
Go to the right up around.
Also. So again, you know, no specific end use, he's just trying to figure out what could be done there, what should be done there.
I can't speak for the commission, but my personal opinion is I'm against spot zoning. If he, he or a developer, someone buys the property and comes in with some type of proposal, we would, I would look at it, I'm open to looking at it, yeah. But I think it's more suited for housing, whether it be affordable housing or some other type of housing like that, just because of the access to the property.
The access needs to be solved regardless.
It's, you know, and obviously that person has owned it for a while, so he knows about the access issues, so. That's my opinion, that's, I can't.
Be quiet.
Okay.
Well, we could relay those points to him.
I don't think it would be spot zoning, but I would, I, I agree with the access, you know, to just, to just go to a commercial zone. You know, the access would be a little tough depending on what that, that use becomes, because that's a pretty narrow road, a pretty tight turn, so.
Yeah, it's already tough and it's residential, never mind making it commercial. How would that, how would that access be able to be accommodated there?
With that said, I mean, I think it could probably be a pretty cool office building, you know, if it had some kind of office or something, you know, so maybe some kind of mixed use or something. But I wouldn't want to just do a zone change and say that it's a suitable use for any type of commercial, because it's really.
That's what I'm saying, if, you know, somebody comes in with a proposal, we will look at it and determine at that time, but I just can't see for rezoning it, for the sake of rezoning it. Then we can sit here every meeting and have somebody coming in and asking their property to be rezoned.
So, so with the access, we're just saying, would the general challenge of, you know, running traffic through that residential neighborhood or the effect on the resident, resident neighborhood?
That's a big, big issue, believe me, it's, you drive, just drive up through there, it's quite difficult.
Well, if it was a town center, right, that's what they're, they were thinking, that's the yellow is town center.
Uh, town gateway.
Gateway.
Town gateway. So permitted uses, you would have to think, you know, is this suitable for permitted uses? And, you know, some of, most of them, I think, you know, would probably be okay. My concern would be that it would be allow as a right, a restaurant, grocery store, personal service. And I don't know that we would want to open that up to those uses as a permitted use. If it were to be a bakery or a country inn or, you know, home occupation, medical office, business office, I think some of those uses probably could be, be okay.
Under town single family, are there's other special permitted uses that?
They could cover it.
Just beside housing that?
Yeah, that's pretty limited, I mean, there's, you know, bed and breakfast, the country inn again, group daycare, home, home occupation, recreation, school.
Well, yeah, we'll relay the comments back, you know, as we told them in the meeting, without an end use, it's, it's kind of hard to have this discussion, but.
But the use, it's not so much the use to me, it's the access. So like, I would want to see like, if we were going to change the zone, like what would that improved access would look like between how many residential uses?
Yeah.
And then if that was okay, or if that was demonstrated to us through a, through a zone change application with a site plan that would, that would show us that, I would be open to the conversation. But just, you know, what I know from the site and the round, like just to change the zone and open it up without any conversation about that commercial access and the impact that would have, that would be mine. Not so much the access, but the way.
Yeah, the access is probably the bigger discussion right now that we're having, you know, offline with him.
Right, if you can work with DOT and you guys come up with some great, something that we need, that we can revisit this conversation.
And they've engaged with one of the local surveyors too, to start looking into this stuff as well, so.
I was gonna ask that, because without a use, you know, that drives the site plan, it's gonna be, well, I don't have a use, I don't have a buyer yet, so I don't have a site plan. So it's gonna be, you know, catch 22, but would a survey at least suffice to assess that property and understand what it would be used for from our perspective?
Well, and for them, or? You know, the other issues with, depending on the use and based on the access to it, no matter what they want to build, I think we are going to require some type of traffic study, whatever they come for.
Yeah.
Based on that road, so.
I don't get it, it's a residential neighborhood, why are we gonna like stick a non-residential use right in the middle of it? And I mean, I get that it looks like it's right adjacent to the Main Street commercial area, but it really isn't because of the way that section of Main Street is, South Main there and Route 44. That really is residential to the north there, so I don't even know why we'd entertain that, but, I mean, there's a lot of residences there. I see that it's that big open area, the, yeah. You know, it's, it's, it's not level with Main Street, it's part of that other neighborhood, which is a residential neighborhood, but.
Well, and even that Kittredge Lane that comes down and makes a 90-degree turn, you've got a 15 to 20-foot drop off in the road down to the property. The property itself is fairly level.
Get to it.
Right.
I think, I just, I think the reason we would look at, at something, even in a residential, that is a pretty huge building. Could it just be a single family residence, I think, or even two family might be difficult, you know, we want to see those properties being reused. So if there is some kind of mixed use that made that feasible to have residents.
Why not make it just more residences?
Possible, yeah, I understand, I think it's a good spot for affordable housing or something, if somebody could get the funding and, and put a project in, they've got the utilities there and everything, so.
Dead end road? You know, safe.
Next, you had Old Robertsville Road, property number.
The next piece I wanted to bring to your attention was.
Before you go on, Mr. Chairman, I gotta accuse myself for the next agenda.
You're not, you're not doing anything. It's just discussion. There's no voting or anything gonna be happening on that, right? There's no voting or action.
There'll be no vote, but it doesn't hurt, you know, whatever you're comfortable with.
Yep.
Just don't talk. Just don't say anything.
Just comfortable with everyone else?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, there's not-
There'll be no voting on it, right?
Yeah.
It's just discussion purpose.
So, I was asked the other week if we had any sixty to hundred-acre, uh, locations in town that would be suitable for a manufacturing company to move to. And I started looking around, and we don't, uh, under our current zoning. So, you guys are-
Nothing down Old Route eight?
None of that size. So, I was looking at this piece, you're somewhat familiar with it, from the Nova Farm application. Um, this used to be one large parcel that has been split between, uh, the two survivors who inherited it.
Is, is, is that the, is that the same parcel that the Nova thing was?
No, that would be, uh-
That joins it.
Yeah, down on the right-hand side.
So, what color is, okay.
Okay, that was the Nova property.
Okay.
For lack of a better term.
Yeah, and this is the other one.
This is the property in question here.
Okay.
So, you'll see that there could be possible access into this property from the end of John Grapo Drive, which is, uh, PNI. It's just the cul-de-sac at the end now.
And what's the yellow adjacent?
Town Gateway. And then the gray is rural residential.
The gray, the gray on the other?
All, all gray is rural residential, including the subject parcel. So, I just wanted to bring this up for a discussion, uh, you know, if the commission wanted to proactively look to open up development areas, this could fit the bill for something like that. Again, no end use in mind yet or anything like that, but manufacturing is only allowed in Gateway and, uh, production innovation, of which it borders both of those. And if it were to be changed, you know, don't forget that we have required buffering in our zoning regulations. I think it only costs thirty-five feet, uh, between residential uses and non-residential. Uh, but of course, further conditions could be put on there. Um, in addition, if you slap on the wetlands overlay,
Yep.
Uh, you'll see there are some wetlands on site which would further, oh, you gotta get rid of the zoning one. Yeah. Which would further compress the actual development area to the center and to the already Gateway and, uh, production innovation areas. So, again, just a discussion point, you know, there's a lot of talk about, uh, development needed in town to grow the granolith, so on and so forth. Uh, in my mind, anything, not anything, but some things that we could do to make possible development easier, we should at least consider. So, I wanted to just bring this to your attention under that discussion.
So, do the property owners?
They, they're not aware. This is just an internal discussion. Well, it's external now, but-
So, this was one manufacturer looking for a large piece like that, or somebody representing the manufacturer?
Someone representing the manufacturer just asked me the question, do we have anything that fits this bill? And I started looking.
So, they don't know about this. They're not asking about this.
No, no. No one's asking but me.
There's nothing on Route eight north?
No, but-
Can we have a topo map for that?
There's nothing in those industrial parks up Route eight?
It's fairly flat, isn't it?
No, not, not of that size.
What, how, but, why?
I don't, I don't know the reasons.
Compare it, this, yeah, I know, that's why I was gonna ask. If they're looking for something that size, they must have something in mind, but they're not sharing that with you?
Not much.
I don't have their information.
Got it, okay.
No, those are five-foot contours.
Did you let them know that we do not, or did you let them know that we are checking?
Let them know we do not currently have something.
I mean, I would be a little wary without-
Yeah. Kind of the same-
Property owner and-
I see where it could be a possibility, but until-
A little more information.
I'm concerned until I have more knowledge, what the use is, what they're gonna do. I mean, if the, the town was looking to purchase it to expand our industrial park, I would have no problem with it.
But also, at the end of the cul-de-sac, it looks like there's a bigger wetland there than it would be coming out of-
Yeah, there is.
Yeah.
They're crossing wetlands one way or another here.
Yeah, you're gonna have to go through wetlands then, to get to that, you know, 'cause Old Robertsville Road definitely can't be used for that purposes.
Oh, yeah, I wouldn't want traffic up there at all. That's, right.
No, that-
Right. Without, without the Grapo access, I wouldn't have even brought this up.
I mean, it's-
And could it be served as a water?
Conceptually, it could be a good plan, but without a plan.
Yeah. That's, I mean, I knew which way this was going after the first discussion, but it was already on the agenda, so.
No, no, it, it's good that we discussed it. We've got residents here also, I'm sure, you know, I, I-
Has that ever been looked at for that purpose?
It's traditionally by the farmland, so probably not.
Okay, so when-
Not since I've been here.
When the, when the other industrial park went in, the one, you know, was it ever looked at to go further that direction?
At that point, I wasn't involved in planning it at all.
I really don't know if it's on the market, if it's, right?
Uh, well, the, the other piece was clearly on the market, and I, I've heard that, that the brother owns this one, that it's also kind of on the market, but-
Yeah, it is. No, it was on Realtor.com.
Okay.
I've seen it. It's been on there for a good month, month or more.
The one can, the-
Two different.
The two different parcels, but they're both on the market still.
Can I answer that?
You said you work at a town.
Well, I know, I know. Ninety-three is on the market, ninety-three acres, about thirty-six.
Ninety-three is, I'm not, I haven't seen the other one listed on Realtor.com at all, but... Now, you're looking at property, you, what about coming into town in the West End? I mean, it's Alt Ledge and, and Hilly, and there's wetlands up there too, along forty-four. There's a large piece parcel up there that's for sale.
So, the reason I was focusing on the, uh, Route eight and eight hundred corridors, 'cause it's already PI and TG and, you know, it's a natural-
But, I mean, it's still somewhere where, you know, utilities could be easily accessed too for something like that.
Route eight north?
No, on forty-four.
Oh, forty-four.
Yeah, just along Costry.
Right, right.
There's a large parcel there for sale. Because manufacturers don't look for utilities. I mean, other than that, there's some large parcels in Winchester, so.
Right. You don't want it up there.
No utilities available.
Yeah, exactly.
Windmill's gonna be close.
Oh, God, yeah.
We won't go there.
Right, okay. All right, well, I've got nothing else to add, just-
That's my discussion, uh, if anybody else.
Oh, good idea for a future industrial park or expansion.
Yeah, no, I mean, I-
I think it used to be a gravel pit years ago. I think if you walk in there, you'll see, like, where they mined out some test pits in there.
I don't know. It's possible down towards the river. They could've in the backside, you know, 'cause all up, gravel up and down through the whole valley there.
'Cause I remember working in there in the eighties. We used to drive across the river to access the property, and-
Yeah, I know.
Years ago, they put a huge trench in there before I was on wetlands.
Isn't there a pump there where you should drive across?
I think there's a pump in that area.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a big sewer pump up there that goes to the industrial park. It goes under the river.
Right past Danfield.
Yeah.
Yeah, I went across there and cut firewood in there one time, through the river, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause the sewer line goes across, right across there and, uh, up through to the end of Grapo Drive, where it comes in. I just asked the residents. I know a lot of your neighbors live in the area. Any, any discussion, any comments? I'll open it up, even though it's not a public hearing. Pardon?
We're just here to gather information and see how far-
Okay, no, I just want, you, you took your time to come here instead of sit in front of the TV and wanted to open it up so you can make comments or have anything, so.
It's a date night. It's a date night.
That means you gotta go to Dairy Queen, right?
I can make comments.
Yep.
I'm a resident actually at the cold brick end of the road.
Yes.
I probably built most recently on the road, um, ten years ago. Chose the area because it's quiet and rural, invested time and energy and, you know, started a family in the property and greatly opposed to changing the zoning on our lovely road that many of us walk on every evening, um, and enjoy with our kids. I think that traffic and entrance are lovely, fine, you know, Grapo Drive, whatever it is, but the proximity thirty-five feet from existing property, that's asinine to me. We have lovely backyards. We have wonderful neighborhood. Um, I think that from, you know, just a property value standpoint, that would be a huge hit to our property value, um, having addressed an industrial in the neighborhood. I know that we have, um, like, let's say even mountaintop across Route eight, we can hear the noise and see the traffic and the other factories that are nearby. We have impacted traffic, and they're not even in our neighborhood. So, I think that this would be a devastating change to our neighborhood.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Uh, next, Item B, discussion of interpretation of impervious surface definition. That was on there. I know we were, we're gonna continue that for a while.
Yeah, we, we- We started that conversation a little bit. There's, there's bigger conversations, I think, afoot with Highland Lake Watershed. Uh, I, I know Marianne was here a couple of weeks ago to talk about some of the things that they're looking at with cyanobacteria and whatnot. So, I think for now, what we wanna do is just come to a decision on an interpretation so that we can guide people. And I, I, I wrote it there for you in terms of kind of my thoughts, and, you know, those are my thoughts. But what we'd like to do is, is come to a consensus so that we could put a one-sheet together so that residents and, uh, surveyors and all the rest can, can all be on the same page. So, the thinking right now is, and I'll pull it up so I don't misspeak, but, um, you know, my thinking is, stone gravel, whatever the surface is, if it's a driveway or a walkway, it's impervious, impervious regardless. Stone and gravel, clean stone and clean gravel in landscaped areas, infiltration trenches, so along the edge of impervious surfaces or under the drip edge of a house, we would look at those as pervious because the point in those, uh, you know, in those being designed, uh, points on a plan is to actually-
They're not compacted either.
Right, they're not compacted, essentially, right. Anything that's not compacted. And then, you know, if an engineer came in with a driveway design that's like, say, pea gravel, but has those GO cells underneath, and they can prove that it's gonna remain pervious, then we would count that as pervious rather than impervious. And so, that's, you know, and then, of course, grass and things like that are, are already pervious. So, we just kinda wanted to get a consensus on all of that, because there had been some comments from others that all gravel, all stone regardless, is impervious, and I just don't think that's quite right. It's affecting, uh, you know, the percentages on people's lots, especially around the lake, and there's been some practices in the past where the wetlands commission has asked for gravel as a buffer to get water to infiltrate, and now it's being counted as impervious surface, and so we just wanna kinda clean that up and get everybody on the same page.
And I agree with anything that's not compacted, but there should be something to go along with it, as long as a maintenance plan, that it be maintained. You know, because if five years from, by approval, they put grass over it, they do something else, that the grass is, is impervious, is it pervious, I should say, but if they do something else, uh, without permits or anything else at that time, then it changes the whole water flow.
Sure, yep.
And I think that our definitions supports that.
I, yes.
Yes, I do too. I agree.
Definition of impervious doesn't talk about, so much about the surface. It says, um, impervious surface is defined to include without limitation parking lots, sidewalks, rooftops, driveways, patios, and paved gravel and compacted dirt surfaces. So, parking lots and sidewalks are meant to just blanket, 'cause they tend to get compacted. I would say unless there's an engineered plan that makes it impervious,
Yes.
that would be different. And then pervious surfaces, um... A surface that presents an opportunity for precipitation that can drain the ground, um, vegetated surface, actually, like, pavement, concrete. So, I think, I think that exactly what you said is important, but the regulations, it would make sense.
So, those uses that you came up with, like, around foundation for the ease and, um, side of driveways and stuff, they would never show up in a site plan as impervious, and you're looking for a bonus with the pervious surfaces, because you couldn't count them for any use.
So, they would-
So, they would just be there and be a, you know, a pervious surface that you can use, but it wouldn't be in any calculation of your impervious pervious surfaces.
So, I think there's been some interpretations in the past where those were being counted as impervious, and I don't think that's accurate, because it's a pretty standard practice to put those things in, especially at the drip line, to catch that water and get it infiltrated. But we had this conversation a couple of months ago that, you know, and I, I don't know, I know there's been a lot of staff changes over the last couple of years and whatever else, but I just wanted to have this conversation, get everybody on the same page, and then we can guide our surveyors and our engineers to, 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 you know, in a direction. So, we would, right, we would typically, or I would typically, consider those pervious, and they would not show up as part of the impervious calculation. Willie, is the question of whether that would be counted as a low-impact design element to gain them in the extra five percent? Is that where you were going with that?
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, me, I'd say no.
Yeah, I would agree.
Okay.
I agree.
'Cause it's not a, you know, a feature. It was nothing that was designed.
It's not a usable feature to travel.
Right, it's just part of your sort of typical landscaping. Right, yeah.
So, like, I think that had been an issue before, you know, like, somebody put stones around their tree, and now it counts as impervious. So, yes, to define that usage is probably a good thing.
Yeah, I agree. Anyone else?
And I would say if somebody is trying to do a use that, like, get that extra bonus to, you know, it has to be a fully engineered plan.
Exactly, yes.
With, you know, and everything else, otherwise, it's just, it is what it is.
Right, yeah. Yeah, stone, stone driveways, like I said, with those GO grid cells underneath, for example, which keep the stone from getting compacted, that could be an LID component, a plan, that could count for that additional five percent.
Right, and that, and that would be engineered to handle so much, like, for that site specific, so that would make sense.
All right. Good. Every town comes across this consideration, has this definition, there's own regulations, right? And I get that we, we have authority to write our own regulations and make it fit for us, like, what is it about our definition of impervious that's-
I, I don't know. I don't think it's unclear. I think it's pretty clear. I just, I don't know where the interpretation came from in the past. We've had that conversation. It's like, you know, I think when Jeff started here, that was what he was told, and so we're just trying to get everybody on the same page. The bigger conversation, I think, is going to be had somewhere in the future with Highland Lake and the Conservation Commission potentially, and others, and we're gonna sort of look at the, look at the watershed, the Highland Lake watershed holistically. And so, we may change some of those definitions, uh, but we're not there yet. We're not even, we're not even dipping our toe in the water just yet, so we'll get there.
And that's probably not even changing the definitions, but the amount of impervious we want to allow, like, where, how far we wanna allow it from the water, and the type of storm there, you know, sizing bore, and all that kind of stuff. Pervious, impervious is pretty-
It's pretty clear.
Clear, based on what you're saying.
Good, thank you.
Item C, discussion of teleports associated with medical facilities.
Yeah, we're gonna start drafting regulations. Uh, I have not done that yet, but based on our conversation a couple of weeks ago, we're gonna start drafting it. The one question that I think we had, or that I had, um, and that there was some conversation about this, do we want commercial regulations for commercial, uh, use in addition to private use? Or do we just wanna stick with private use on those helipads for now? The, the proposal that came to us was just for private use, uh, but we didn't know if we wanted to include some kind of commercial or do private for now and deal with commercial in the future if we get it.
I think deal with the commercial in the future. No, I don't see that happening, but you never know what-
I agree with you.
Anything could happen.
And if it comes in, they can still use the helicopter, right? They just don't have that.
Good, thank you.
Item D, interpretation of fence setback requirements in the Highland Lake District.
All right, so this is another interpretation question for you all, um, and I cited the section number there. So, if you don't have an answer tonight, that's fine. Your Highland Lake District has two setbacks, from what we can tell, within the regulations. There's one section, uh, which is four fifteen, this is the new section numbers, by the way, uh, in the codified version. Four fifteen thirteen B three G says that set, fences must be set back at least two feet to allow for maintenance, if that makes sense. However, four fifteen thirteen B three K says it's nine feet. So, what I'd like to probably have you all do is go back and read that section, and then let's have a conversation at your next meeting and just decide whether or not it's two feet or nine feet, because there's some nuances there. There's a discussion earlier in that section about few sheds to the lake. Um, there's-
What was that number again?
Uh, it is, in the new reg, it's four fifteen, four fifteen B three is the, the fences and structures within the HL district. Uh, so I would ask you to just read four fifteen B three in its entirety, and then I wanna kinda talk about the fence piece in it, because I have a feeling it's, it's one of those evolutionary things where the regs got written and then they got changed, and, you know, they didn't get cleaned up afterward, but I, I, I don't know the history of that section either. You all have a better sense of that, so take a look at it. We'll talk in a couple of weeks, where we, we sort of wanna get some thought of that, because we've got some questions, bring us here. People are doing work. We're trying to issue permits for, for fences, and we don't quite know what the setback should be. Whether it's nine feet, or whether it's two feet, or whether it's the side yard, depending on the distance off the, the property line that the house is. So, I, that's your homework assignment for the next couple of weeks.
Nine feet seems like a lot.
Yeah, nine feet seems like a real lot.
Real lot.
Especially those lots up there. A lot of them are very small. Right, and, and the way it's written, and I don't have it in front of me, but the way it's written is, it, it's something along the lines of, you know, the distance between the, the side of the primary structure and the property line, or nine feet, whichever is more. So, or what, or at least nine feet. So, if you've got a side yard of, let's say, five feet, because that's a setback on the building, you, you would have to bump your fence in, once, you know, if you're coming on the front side of your house, let's say, you'd have to bump your fence in by four feet off the corner of the house, to make that nine, you know, nine foot. So, just, I, I would ask, take a look at that, let's have a conversation.
Neighbor's gonna think that they can put their junk right up- The neighbor's gonna think that they can put their junk right up to the fence, because the fence must be on the property line.
Yeah, that's right. And, and the other thing is that, like I said, there's a discussion about view shed, but then there's a requirement of landscaping on both sides of the fence, which I think kinda defeats the purpose of the view shed, so...
So, I, I gotta look at the other regulation, but this looks to me, if it didn't change, that only semi-open fences have to be nine feet, and that's similar to the decked patio setback. So the thinking might be, if you only have a semi-fence, if you're trying to create like a patio deck type of use, that should be, that'd be right on the property line. Is that a way to get a patio five feet from the property line? Because it's, that nine foot, and all regulations is under J, which is examples of semi-open fence shown above.
I think fences, the way I read it was that all fences within the district have to be semi-open. I agree. So I, I would just say, let, read through it, and let's have a, let's have a conversation in a couple of weeks about it, because I, I think it's nuanced, it can be complicated. I've gone through it half a dozen times, and I can't quite skip to what it's telling me, and I've had some colleagues take a look at it as well, and we can't quite get to what it's telling us. So, you're the commission, they're your regs, you might have some background in terms of what your, what your, your end game was there in getting those things written the way they are, you might have a sense of why it was written that way, so we can, we can sort it out.
So if you're gonna investigate it, you should probably check out Lombard on Lake Drive, 'cause the commission, Wetlands Commission took them to court, and they won because they put a solid eight-foot fence up, tried to go all the way down to the lake, that would probably help guide you a little bit better.
Yeah, there's also that piece of it, you have to be a certain distance from the hundred-foot water line, do you?
Yes.
And/or you retain them all.
Right, right.
I remember going through that.
Yeah, exactly, we've had several little...
Yeah, you can't have, we know you can't have it more than, I think, four feet within twenty feet of the lake shoreline, so we, we, that part's fairly clear, it's the, it's the side yard property line setback piece of it, we're starting.
That house that Scott was referring to, that was a hot topic for quite a while, so there should be some documentation.
And when he lost, he sold the house, so that's how upset he was.
Cause what?
When he lost the court case, he sold his house, so he's no longer here.
Item B, discussion, June ninth meeting, eight twenty-four reviews and presentation of Connecticut DOT.
So you're going to get a request to do eight twenty-four reviews of two bridge replacement projects, I don't know which bridges they are at this moment, I don't have the memos yet. DOT, they're, they're both state bridge projects, so they're on town roads, but they're state bridges, and DOT is gonna come into a presentation, we're being asked, Jim Rollins is asking if we can start the meeting at six thirty rather than seven, so that we can, not keep you here super late.
Yeah, I don't see a problem with that.
Can you make it for seven o'clock, or six thirty o'clock, or?
I shh, can't hear Saturday now, but I shh.
No, I know, I mean, I know, I know for you, it's, it's...
That's for the June ninth meeting?
June ninth, yes. And you do have a couple of public hearings.
Yeah, I believe those bridges, one is on Grandville Road, it's over the Mad River, and the other one, I believe, is White Street, across, I believe that one, yeah.
So we can do them DOT presentations first?
Yeah, we'll do DOT presentations first.
Yeah, that would be the first thing, put that the first thing on the agenda, so we can do that.
Yeah.
Get that completed before we do the other business.
Yeah.
But I believe that's the two bridges, 'cause those are the two that are up for scheduled to be replaced, best of my knowledge.
All right, so we're vision six thirty on the ninth, then? Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, item F, we had talked about setting May nineteenth for a meeting date for a May meeting, 'cause we can't, are not able to have it on the twelfth, 'cause of the town budget hearing, and on the twenty-sixth, we won't have one, 'cause it's Memorial Day, so... I'll make a motion that we have a meeting May nineteenth, possibly in the blue room, if it's available, starting at seven PM.
A second.
All in favor?
I'm just not available that day.
Okay.
I might not be available that day.
All right.
I'll be, I said I was available.
You had the winner off, you're available.
Yeah, right, exactly, I'm available.
I'm a good seat, so I'm happy to be here, so...
All right. So, unanimous, I believe, okay. Approval of minutes for April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting minutes? Could I have a motion to approve minutes?
I make a motion, we approve the regular meeting minutes for April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Anyone second?
Second.
Rest of second. All in favor? Unanimous.
Communications.
I don't have it, no.
We've got seven minutes.